Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande Council Meeting, March 7th, 7:00. Call the meeting to order. Our first two items of business are invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll ask Pastor Paul to come up for the invocation, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. People gathered here. It's a good day to read part of a Psalm, so I'm going to read part of Psalm 91 for you. "He who dwells in the shelter of the Most High will rest in the shadow of the Almighty, and I will say of the Lord, He is my refuge and my fortress, my God, in whom I trust." Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we ask your presence to be with the City Council tonight as it conducts its business and the business of the city. Grant us your wisdom, your ways, make your ways our ways, Father, for all City employees, especially first responders and those who put themselves in harm's way frequently, and we include teachers in that, and those who work in the medical field on the front lines of a pandemic we think is going away, we hope is going away, and we pray that it is going away. We pray tonight for the people of Ukraine, that somehow your will might be done in that part of the world, that your love might be shown to be more, to be stronger than hate and stronger than the forces arrayed against the people. We pray for world leaders and that they might be given your wisdom and your counsel, how to work together to make a more peaceful world. And, Father, for all of those in need of healing, whether it's in their body or their minds or their spirits, we ask for your mercy and grace. Now, lead us, Father, as a city, towards you, towards being able to make everybody's lives in Casa Grande a more productive, a more fulfilling life, more comfortable, and able to give you thanks. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
You still sound good from when you were doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let the roll call show that all council members are present. Welcome, a special welcome to Bob Holliston coming back.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to be here.
Next item is Item C, our minutes.
Mayor McFarland, as far as our minutes are concerned, we want to consider the approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes from February 22nd as we're done, and consider the acceptance of the Casa Grande Police Personnel Retirement Board minutes from February 15th. We accept for the record. Consider the acceptance of the Park and Rec Advisory Board minutes for January 20th. We keep it, and consider the acceptance of the Casa Grande Charter Committee, who I think have members here tonight. Consider the acceptance of the Casa Grande Arts and Humanities Commission meeting on February 1st. And that was the end of those, Mayor.
One more, Mr. Powell. C-6.
Oh, it was on the bottom, I'm sorry. Consider the acceptance of the Casa Grande Fire Personnel Retirement Board meeting minutes of August 27th as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, minutes are all approved. Next is our claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept.
I pay the claims dated February 16th to March 1st, 2022, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda approval. It's Item E on our agenda. Does anyone have any changes, Larry, anything?
We got none, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone from the council? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve our tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved as presented. We do have a special presentation tonight, and I'm happy to recognize our past mayor, Mr. Bob Jackson, who's going to talk to us, have a little discussion on the charter review and the committee's recommendations to the council. Good to see you, Bob.
Nice to see you too, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here. Been a while. You want to start the timer, Mayor? Just so that I know.
Why not?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for letting us do this. It was kind of a fun endeavor. Certainly, I did it the last time, and I remember last time when we were doing this, we thought, oh, we did a really good job, we'll never have to come back and do this again. And as we're going through it this time, we're kind of scratching our heads, saying, why didn't we see that the last time? You know? So I think one of the things that the committee really felt, and I think we told the council the same thing the last time, it is probably an endeavor that you ought to do about every eight to 10 years, because state laws change, people change, and we're always coming up with things that we think, well, why didn't we change that the last time? You guys appointed a great committee. We have with us tonight from the committee Nancy K. Wood, Mike Cruz, Michelle Emig, and we also had Donovan Kramer Jr., Renee Luzon Ben, and Rebecca Romo that participated. Your staff did a great job. I mean, we were able to really attack the issues in our first meeting and ended up only having to do three meetings to get through the issues. So, big thank you to Mr. Wallace, Mr. Weaver, and Mackenzie Lecter for all their help. Most of the changes are housekeeping items, and I know you've seen what they were in your packet. Our committee went through each one individually and said yes or no to them, and so they are all of our recommendations. I would like to just caution you about one item that slipped by all of us until earlier this week, when Brett Wallace was going through it one last time, and it dealt with a charter provision for the jail. And what the charter provision says essentially is, the city shall use the county for any jail services. And the recommendation, we talked about it, our recommendation was to just change the language to allow the flexibility of the council if they wanted to go to a private provider. The committee did not have an opportunity to vote on that one. We did send an email out to all of them to see if any of them had a heartburn with it. I got one response back that said they were fine with it, heard nothing else from any of the rest of them, and honestly, knowing the committee and the time we worked together, I don't think any of them would have a problem with it, but I wanted to make sure you were aware that that was an issue we did not talk about, it came up kind of after the fact. There were three items that we talked about that I wanted to touch on, because we had a lot of discussion about it, and I know you get our meeting minutes, but I'm not sure that they necessarily did justice to the things that we've talked about. First one was the mayor's term and term limits. I think the council, or the council, the committee was very much in favor of changing the mayor's term to four years instead of two, but felt the term limit of eight years was appropriate. So the recommendation is to just change the mayor's term from two to four years, and the language that's in there says something about an eight-year total term, so we'll just leave that alone. As part of that discussion, the issue was brought up, why doesn't the council have term limits? And in all honesty, nobody had a really good answer to that. So our recommendation to you is to look at a council member term limit of three terms, which would be a total of 12 years, would not go into effect until the charter changes go into effect, which would be after the next election, assuming that it gets passed. But we did feel like it made some sense to go ahead and put some council term limits in as well. The other item that is probably not a significant change, but it's a different way to do business, dealt with the judicial selection. I know Mayor McFarland, myself, I had a long conversation with Mayor Mitchell, and doing a two-year, or you'd have to change to a four-year with a new selection review, if the council, if the mayor's term gets changed, what happens is that if you're happy with the current judge, we go through an exercise where a lot of people spend a lot of time, candidates spend a lot of money, have a lot of hope that they're going to become the next judge, or city magistrate in Casa Grande, and we go and reappoint the incumbent, and there's nothing fundamentally wrong with that. But we recognize that it really wastes a lot of people's time, and certainly, my wife was the chairman of that group the last two times, and I got an earful about it, so she was very happy that our recommended change is, the council review the judge every time, every four years when the mayor's change, but you decide whether you want to go out and do a selection or whether you're happy with the current judge. If you're happy with the incumbent judge, you don't go through the process. And our thought was that that will help those people that are applying from out of town to not essentially waste their time coming in to do that. Mayor McFarland, I know I didn't talk to you, I don't know how you feel about that, but I suspect you felt like Mayor Mitchell and I did about that. We also recommended that with the housekeeping items, and we did this the last time, I was fortunate enough to do the last Charter Amendment Committee as well, we took all of the housekeeping items and bundled them into a single issue for the voters to look at, because we felt like they were pretty innocuous, and we wanted to make sure that they got passed. The ones that were not so innocuous, in this case, would probably be the term limits for the council and the term of the mayor. We would recommend that you look at those as a separate issue, whether you do, you know, three or two with the mayor-council term issues combined, up to you, but that was our recommendation, that you look at doing them as separate issues, so that you don't run the risk of not passing those housekeeping changes that really need to be made. So with that, I thank you all for letting us do this, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Bob, I do want, I did want to kind of call out the committee and thank you all for the time you've worked on this, you know, Nancy K. Wood, Michael Cruz, and Michelle, and I see Michelle's here, and I see Michael's here, yourself as the chairperson, thank you, and Donovan Kramer, and Renee, and Rebecca Romo. So really, I know it's time, but you were not paid, so I appreciate that, and thanks for your service on this.
Our pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
On the term limits, were you able to, as you guys, you know, talked about this, did research on other cities to see if it is kind of common? I know a lot of cities do have the mayor, you know, with the four-year term, so is it pretty common for city councils to have the term limits at 12 years?
You know, that's a great question, Councilwoman, and yes, we did ask that question, and if I'm smart enough to have made a copy of that, I will tell you, if not, potentially, Steve might have it.
There was 11, 11 other cities that had council term limits.
Okay.
Out of the 90 cities.
Out of 90?
91 cities and towns.
It was not common, and frankly, I was a little surprised when the conversation went that way. I mean, I, we talked about the mayor term limit, and they said, well, how come the council doesn't have a term limit? And we're like, and then we asked Stephen and his staff to help, and they did the homework and said, yeah, 11 did, but we felt like, we throw it out there. You know, at the end of the day, you guys get to make the decision what you want to do. We're just a recommending body.
And can you tell us what some of those comments were?
With the...
When those discussions came up? What were the discussions?
I think, we got into a long conversation about how important history is sometimes, and certainly, you know, Mr. Powell, I think you told me the other day, you've been on the council for 25 years. History's important, and we really recognized that that was important, but we also felt like there needs to be turnover in councils. And, you know, as I stand here today, there's essentially three of you that were here, well, yeah, three of you, two of you, three of you, that are here today, that were here six years ago when I was here, but two of you came on while I was on the council as well. And so, as we talked about term limits, they asked me, you know, is there an average that a lot of, most people, most council people locally have served? And I said, I don't know that there's an average, but my experience has been, in the 30 years I've been here, usually 10 to 12 years seem to be about the limit of what council people serve, not because they couldn't serve longer, and certainly, Councilman Powell is an exception, but I think most people, that's, you know, you start getting kind of burned out at about 10 to 12 years, and so that's how we came up with a three-term limit. And I think it was really prompted in the fact that the mayor has a term limit, the turnover does help, there's a plus minus to it, like I said, there's some advantage to history, but also felt some new viewpoints, this is not a bad thing either. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Bob, one of the things I would say is that council members probably need to be on at least eight years, if not more, but what, you've been there, a lot of things are just starting to happen, and that needs that person instead of somebody new that hasn't, isn't acquainted with it. And so, you know, whatever you guys decide is fine with me, but I think that giving council members at least two term, two four-year terms would kick it out there where you could discuss and do some good.
They're recommending three.
We're recommending three.
Oh, three four-year terms, good.
So we give them 12 years totally.
See, my 25 don't look so bad now.
You doubled it. You doubled it.
And again, Lisa, it wasn't, it was one of those issues where it had come up, I talked a lot about how the job of the council is very different than the job of the mayor. And so I think that council people play a very important role, but the mayor ends up being kind of the person that people look to. And so maybe that's the reason why they didn't put term limits in when they did the charter in 1975.
But I think, don't the voters determine, to me, the voters determine that too.
They do, and we talked about that as well.
That's why I don't know if it, but I understand, and you know, that's with the committee.
I think, and I don't want to presuppose the committee, because we didn't really talk about this, but we were very cognizant that the last two or three, four, five elections, very few people have shown an interest, you know, and certainly, I was a beneficiary of that for three of my four terms, and I know the mayor's been the beneficiary of the three he's done so far. But that's a good and bad thing, you know, or, as you all know, running for public office, especially when you got to get, what, 400 and some signatures now, is a pain. And so I think that certainly is part of the discouragement, but we did talk about how it's a difficult decision, and I think at the end of the day, we felt like there were enough people that had asked the question, and we said, we'll recommend to the council, put it on the ballot. You can, again, these are our recommendations, you don't want to do it, that's fine, you know? We had a lot of discussion about it, though, in our meetings.
So, well, I see the point of the mayor running four-year terms, and I agree, because it's a lot of work to run every two years. But the one thing that is strange now is that if the council serves staggered terms, so if someone on council wanted to run for mayor, did you guys discuss that part about having to?
We did.
Resign, you know?
Yeah, well, I mean, technically, if you're mid, if, you know, like, I don't want to pick on Lisa, but she just got elected, or Donna, you know? I mean, if they wanted to run for mayor this time, they'd have to resign to run too, you know? So, yeah, we did talk about that.
Yeah, it's the same situation.
But, again, you know, and...
Well, you're on everybody's cycle, though.
Mayor, I'm sure you found the same thing I did, you know, when you run a two-year term.
Oh, yeah.
You're through, you have, you know, you start campaigning after the first year in office.
Yeah.
So that means you have a year to figure out what you're doing, a year to campaign, a year to come back and do something, and then, you know, so it's really not enough time, and that's why we really thought the four-year term made sense. I will tell you, when we did this the first time, when I did it back in the early, you know, '06 or whenever it was, issue came up then too, and we had two former mayors on the committee with me, both Bob Mitchell and Jimmy Kerr, and they were, at the time, Bob liked the four-year term, but Jimmy said no, you know, he liked the two-year term because it made you kind of stay relating to the people throughout your term in office. Times have changed, you know? I know my first election, I probably had to get 130 signatures. You poor guys are getting 400 and something now, you know? It's hard, it really is, so.
Any other questions or comments for Bob?
No, I just want to thank the committee, because I know that we had so much expertise on there, and having you there, Bob, you were able to give some insight, so, you know, and the one thing I will say that I very much appreciate, that I didn't before I came on this council, is that I thought, well, I think the mayor should be two-year limit, you know, and then, when we got into this and watching, and like you said, after the first year, you got to start campaigning again, that takes away from the work of the city and what they really need to do, and it is hard, but it should be hard, because the community has entrusted us to sit up here, and if we don't want it bad enough to go out and get those signatures, then we should not be elected. So, I mean, I appreciate the committee. Thank you.
I agree with you. Just, you know, kind of a final thought, and then I'll, I promise I'll sit down. I've done a lot of committees like this, and I will tell you that everybody on that committee had input. They were not bashful about seeing what they thought, they were great about talking through the issue and coming to a consensus, and so you guys did a great job in picking the committee, because we came from very diverse backgrounds, and certainly, I think at the end of the day, we all got along very well, and everybody had input, so, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, before you leave, I just wanted also to, which we have, is to thank the committee
and the people that have worked with you on this, and anybody that's been working for you knows you're a strong leader, so that's a good thing, too, so.
Thank you, Dick.
And you don't have to tell people I'm 25 years at this.
I wouldn't have known that if you hadn't told me so. Thank you.
Almost 25.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, there's obviously no action item tonight. Staff will develop the actual ballot language and bring that back at a future meeting, but if there is discussion of the council of any of those items that you're not in support of, then we just need to know that, and then we can draft the language and bring it forward for approval.
Very good. Okay, I think, I think you have, go ahead. If anybody has any issues with that, then just see Steve later. All right, we'll move on to Item G, which is our consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there any changes, anything your staff wants to pull off or change, council members? All right, anyone from the public want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Do you want to talk about any of that stuff for the trucks and stuff, or is that...
No, okay. All right, so seeing none, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pow.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next is Item H, which is our public comments section, and just to remind everyone, I will open the floor for public comments, and please keep your comments to three minutes, and state your name and address when you approach the podium, and please remember, these are not agendized items, so we can't have a discussion on them, but we can give direction to staff to follow up with you at a later time. So I do have a one speaker card here, Mr. Michael Cruz, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Mike Cruz, resident here in the City of Casa Grande, was also part of the committee to put together that presented all the items discussed by Mayor Jackson. But I'm here for a different reason. Since I was here, I might as well make the best use of my time, right, while in Rome. I love this community, and I have to applaud all the great work you guys are doing, it's phenomenal. You know, my wife and I moved to Pinal County about seven years ago. We're both highly educated, have great careers, we could go anywhere in this country, even in this world, and find really good employment, probably make twice as much as what we're making in Pinal County. But we choose to live here because of the quality of life, and you guys talked a lot about that today in your form, in your earlier meeting. It's a great place to live, great place to raise a family, good people, so many resources and activities and things for everyone. We're buying our first home in the City of Casa Grande, we're going through that process, and it's right here in the Evergreen District. We love this area, reminds me of a lot of where I grew up. The house was $300,000, and it's a fixer-upper. This same house, four years ago, was about $150,000. My wife and I, we smile and we pay, we could afford it, no big deal, and we could swing the other $40,000 needed to renovate it in cash and all that kind of good stuff. But as we're going through this process and we get ready to take on this home, I'm reminded by the words of Cesar Chavez, "It's not enough to progress as individuals, where our friends and neighbors are left behind." And I'm starting to think, wow, what about the people not in the same position my wife and I are in, when it comes to housing? How would they ever afford a home? How would they ever be able to live this lifestyle and own the American dream? I bring this up because we're growing. Workforce housing is needed to be able to meet budgets of all kinds. It's just the nature of the beast right now. But as we move forward, I encourage you, through my personal experience, that you get ready to tame this beast, explore innovative ways to develop. Outside of traditional apartment and single-family residence, what other options are we exploring and promoting and attracting developers to come in and invest? I encourage you, as we move forward, to think about those items, to think about the everyday person working at the Dollar General, even our schoolteachers that are capped out, what are we doing to help them? So I bring this up because it's an important thing for me. Housing is important, I think it's the foundation for the American dream, and it's the foundation to build a good community. So if we want to continue to bring in top talent and bring in good labor force and workforce and just good people, we need to be able to ensure we're able to provide the housing. So thank you for what you're doing, you're doing great work as it is, but I just encourage you to pay more closer attention as we move forward, to look and explore different ways in which we can manage this crisis as we move forward. So thank you for your time, I owe you a couple of dux for that.
Thank you, Mike.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll get it from your taxes, Mike.
All right, so if, even if you didn't fill out a speaker card, if there's anyone else here tonight that would like to address the council, this is your opportunity. Okay, well, seeing not everyone jump up, then I'll close the floor, and we'll move on to our next item, which is Item I, a ward of contracts, Item I-1. Kevin?
Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to enter into a construction manager at-risk contract with Allison Mills Construction LLC for the construction of new sidewalk services and ADA compliant ramps at the City Hall. construction of new sidewalk services and ADA compliant ramps at the city hall at a guaranteed maximum price not to exceed 479,695. This project will refresh all the existing sidewalks around the city hall, city hall facility, taking into consideration all the Americans with disabilities and public rights of way accessibility guidelines, looking at all of those issues, it entails the replacement of all the concrete sidewalks around city hall, sidewalk curb ramps, curb sections, re-locating some pedestrian lighting, and other miscellaneous infrastructure removal, adjustment to certain fixtures, irrigation modifications, some grading work, and then landscape restoration, and some other related improvements. We did go through a qualifications-based process to select Ellison Mills as the most competent and qualified company to move us through this project, this project was budgeted for this year, but I did want to point out that 173,292 of that is being funded out of our CDBG program, so, just wanted to make that note, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, is that all, all the concrete in front of the city hall?
We're looking at everything that needs to be replaced, yes, and if you will take a walk around, you'll see what it looks like.
Yeah, I, I see it every day. Matt?
Are, are we not ADA compliant right now? I, I mean, we're probably ADA compliant from the time it was built, correct?
They were, they were ADA compliant the last time we did the upgrades, but those rules have changed, so we'll be looking at modifying what we have out there to make sure we're compliant, it's, it's very similar to what we go through anytime we make any roadway improvements, we have to take a look at the facilities to make sure there's no changes that are needed to keep us compliant.
What's a timeline on that, Kevin, once, once you get started, how long is it gonna take?
You know, I, I think it's a 120-day contract, but with some of the challenges we're having with projects and materials delivery, you know, we'll just have to wait and see and just work through those issues as they present themselves.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. All right, then I'll consider a resolution number, please Gloria, for I-1.
Resolution number 5387, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Ellison Mills Construction LLC to provide construction manager at-risk services for the 2021 CDBG City Hall Sidewalk Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of a contract by the city manager, and authorizing the finance director to make the necessary budgetary transfers.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of resolution 5387 as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item is I-2, back to you, Kevin.
Yes, staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the scope of services with Kaufman and Associates in an amount not to exceed 243,199, and that is to prepare the airport drainage study and develop an airport drainage master plan, staff also requests authorization to disperse funds and perform necessary budget transfers to accomplish this project, city council authorized staff to apply for an ADOT aeronautics grant to complete the drainage master plan, and we're now ready to move forward with that in an amount not to exceed 250,000 in our, in this year's budget, city council did approve a five-years airport general services contract number 0121-4 through ordinance number 3249, with the understanding that individual projects would be brought back to council and scope of services and fees would be approved at that time, so that's the process we're going through at this point, the objective of the drainage master plan is to provide a comprehensive investigation of all the storm drainage systems to address our localized flooding, ponding, adequacy of our, our existing storm facilities, and then it'll map out all of the infrastructure that is needed at the airport, both near-term and long-term, so that we can program those into our budgets in the future. Again, this is a project that is partially funded by, by ADOT, so they're covering 90% of the cost, and the city's cost associated with this project is 25,000, 10% of the project, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, that's actually FAA money, right, just through ADOT?
This is an ADOT-funded project, this is not FAA-grant.
Okay, so it's not through FAA funds?
Correct.
Okay. Matt?
Kevin, I like the, the 90-10 grants, if we can get more of those, but it's, it's really important to see how big of an economic development tool the airport is, because I know we wouldn't have a lot of the major corporations looking at us coming to Casa Grande if we didn't have such a good, clear airport, so, I appreciate you keeping up with it, and just to really make the investment in the future of that airport, so we can continue our economic growth cycle, so, big driver.
Are they gonna look at drainage too, if, if, for example, if we extended the runway out to the west?
This will look at any future improvements that we're proposing in our airport master plan, which that process is going on as well, and this is a component of that, but it's always done separately.
Okay, all right, anybody else have any other comments?
None.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Gloria, I'll consider an ordinance number, please, I, on I-2.
Ordinance number 3249.1, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Kaufman Associates, Inc., to provide an airport drainage study and to develop an airport drainage master plan, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the scope of services under the contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3249.1 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item is I-4, and again, another resolution, or a resolution, for the public works.
Thank you, staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with CNS engineers for an amount not to exceed 70,376 to design the runway 05-23 and the connector taxiway rehabilitation project, and any necessary budget transfers or fund dispersment that's needed to accomplish this project. City council did authorize to receive a ADOT aeronautics grant to complete the pavement rehabilitation project of our, our main runway and the adjacent taxiway, and the total budget for that was not to exceed 725,000 through resolution 5299, and staff is now ready to move forward with that project. City council approved the five-year airport general services contract, as we mentioned in the last RCA, and that was developed so that we would bring these projects back individually once we had the scope and fees associated with that, so we are asking to move forward with the contract for CNS engineers, and this project, again, is a ADOT-funded share, which is 90%, or 652,500 is ADOT's portion, 72,500 is the city's portion, or 10% of that total cost, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just glad you knew what I was talking about when I said I-4, and you, you read I-3, so thank you.
I didn't have I-3 until he.
Thanks for checking. Does anybody have any questions on this?
None.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, now I'll entertain a resolution for I-3, please.
Resolution number 5388, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from, accepting the proposal for professional services from CNS Engineers, Inc., to provide the design and bidding services for the construction of the runway 05-23 and connector taxiways rehabilitation project, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of an agreement.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of resolution number 5388 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, item I-4, so another resolution, and Kevin, it's back to you.
Thank you, staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with CNS engineers, once again, in an amount not to exceed 39,528 to provide construction management services for the runway, excuse me, the runway and taxiway rehabilitation project we just spoke of, again, we're using the same process, the five-year general services contract for the airport to procure this contract with CNS, and this will be for them to basically manage the project, do all the reporting requirements through ADOT, and then making sure that the project is done successfully and, and within specifications, and again, the, it's an amount not to exceed 39,528, so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Still no.
All right, thank you, Kevin, then I'll entertain a resolution for I-4, please Gloria.
Resolution number 5389, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for, for professional services from CNS Engineering, Inc., to provide the construction administration services for the construction of the taxiway 05-23 and connector taxiway rehabilitation project, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of an agreement.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5389 as presented. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next is item I-5, last one for you, Kevin, nope?
I promise, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with Cactus Asphalt for the construction services related to the initial roadway improvements for the Pinal Tech Park in an amount not to exceed 619,990, staff is requesting authorization to procure this contract through a Pinal County Cooperative Job Order Contract, number 175923, this is a contract that we have used for procurement in the past, and want to take advantage of that to move this project forward, Cactus Asphalt will be providing paving on several sections of Ethington and Burris Road, where they connect with Highway 84, and then paving approximately 70 feet north of both of those intersections, they're also going to be adjusting manholes, grades on Burris Road, hauling and placing and furnishing grading of 11,396 tons of ragged base course on four and one-half miles of roadway in this project area, and it should be understood that this, once this roadway is prepped, it will be a double chip seal applied to this roadway, but that's being done under a separate contract that we already have with, excuse me, with Cactus Asphalt, so I just wanted to make that note, this is a project that we have an IGA in place with the Pinal County, so that they can pay 50% of the cost of this project, so, once we've completed the construction of this project, we will invoice Pinal County and, and receive 50% of those funds back, so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any questions, anybody? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for resolution number for I-5, please Gloria.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I did want to point now that there is a typo in the resolution, it should be 5390.
5390.
Resolution number 5390, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport, Inc., for the initial roadway improvements for Pinal Tech Parks, park, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transportation, Inc., in accordance with the terms submitted to Pinal County.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 5390 as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item is under our boards and commissions, item J-1, this is considering approval and reappointment of Joy, and I always mess up her last name.
Hyde.
Hyde, okay, there was a secret to it, Joy Hyde to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, with the term to expire on February 1st, 2025, and approve a waiver for the residency requirement. Anybody have any questions on her reappointment, she's been on the board for the last term? All right, I just, I just want to publicly thank her for her service, I, I don't think she's here tonight, I don't see her out there, so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Joy Hyde is reappointed to the Recreation Advisory Board, and I think we let her know that that board might be changing its name.
We did.
So, as we move forward. Okay, next item then is our I- L, these are public meetings and public hearings, the first item is a public hearing, item L-1, considering the approval of an ordinance number 1178.133.2. James, this is you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a zoning request pertaining to property located at the southeast corner of Quartzon Road and Treacle Road, it's just shy of 10 acres, the current zoning of the property is B-2, the B-2 zone is a general business zone district, it allows commercial, retail, and restaurant uses, with the approval of a conditional use permit, one could also propose fast food establishments, car washes, and tire shops, the maximum height of the B-2 zone is 35 feet, and there is a setback requirement of a minimum of 45 feet from the Cottonwood Ranch boundary, which lies to the east. The request in front of you this evening is to rezone this property from B-2 to R-3, which is a multi-family residential zone district, in the R-3 zone, it allows multi-family structures, based on the site size, up to 216 units could be proposed, and the R-3 allows three-story development up to 35 feet maximum height, I do want to point out that 35 feet maximum height is the same for the Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood to the east in the single-family area, and also under the R-3, 20-foot, there's a 20-foot minimum building setback from all property lines. When staff. When staff was evaluating the appropriateness of the request from B two to R three, one of the things that we looked at was the compatibility of R three with respect to existing and proposed land uses surrounding the site. If you'll note, on the north side of Quartzon, it's all designated for non-single-family residential uses. You have commercial on both the west and east corners of Treacle and Quartzon on the north side, with multifamily immediately to the west and east of those commercial sites, and then, and then the school use. And then, the same is true for the west side of Treacle Road where you have the potential for commercial and office development immediately across the street, and again, office a little bit further south. So the largest concern in the area with the most sensitivity is the Cottonwood Ranch, single-family neighborhood to the east. One of the features that was implemented at the time of the Cottonwood Ranch development was the implementation of a thirty-foot wide landscape buffer that sits to the west of those lots in the Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood. And this photo here shows that thirty-foot landscape buffer. There's a number of trees within it, and interestingly, there's view fencing for those houses. And I think that poses one of the greatest challenges when thinking about any kind of non-residential, non-single-family residential development next to the Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood because of the, the presence of that view fencing. But I would imagine that what that developer envisioned was that the view fencing was for the benefit of the view of that landscape buffer. And then when this parcel went to develop, we would be tasked with designing some compatible measures to maybe embellish or enhance that landscape buffer. So staff is recommending a number of conditions to bolster compatibility with the adjacent Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood, and I was going to walk through those with you. The first recommended condition is that there is to be a minimum of a twenty-foot landscape buffer along the eastern portion of this property. And so what that would create is a minimum of a fifty-foot wide buffer, instead of just thirty, to bolster and enhance that landscape corridor. And then the second condition is that appropriate screening along the eastern boundary of that parcel be determined at the time of the major site plan. And I wanted to sort of walk you through what that would potentially look like. So beyond the thirty-foot landscape buffer that's already existing as part of the Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood, staff is recommending that the developer of the R three parcel provide a minimum of a twenty-foot additional landscape buffer. And then, in terms of what type of additional screening, that could be something like an opaque wall, or there may even be the potential for that to be the back of enclosed carports. That's, that's an element that could be more critically looked at at the time of the major site plan, which would require additional public notification for additional input, and that would be considered by Planning Commission. The third recommendation is that any portions of buildings greater than one story or greater than twenty feet in height shall be set back a minimum of a hundred-and-twenty-five feet from any single-family residential lot. I do want to note that without this condition, if it were to be just subject to the R three zoning, they could be as close as twenty feet from the property boundary. So staff's actually recommending a setback that's about six times greater the distance out of concern about the, about the compatibility. Any portions of buildings greater than one story or greater than twenty feet in height within two-hundred feet from the Cottonwood Ranch, single-family residential lots shall have their narrowest elevations be oriented to be parallel to the western boundary of said lots. And so, why that condition's important is, obviously, multifamily structures tend to be far more massive than single-family homes. And so by requiring that the skinny portion of the elevation be oriented so that it's parallel with the residential area to the east, it minimizes the, the bulk and scale from the view of those homes. And then, the applicant did provide a conceptual site plan. There, to date, there has been no major site plan submitted. Like I say, that will ultimately, once it does get submitted, depending on the outcome of the zoning, there'll be additional public notification and additional analysis. However, the benefit of having a conceptual site plan is seeing how the site could be developed while meeting these recommended conditions. One last condition is that the owner would be required to dedicate right-of-way at the time of development or at the request of the city prior to development. Where the necessary right-of-way is, is along Quartzon Road. Quartzon is designated as a principal arterial, so it's designed to ultimately be a hundred-and-forty feet wide. So, the applicant would require, be required to do their portion of half-street dedication and improvements. Now Quartzon actually is two lanes in each direction through that, that portion, and there's also a bike lane. So ultimately, what their improvements would look like would be the construction of a sidewalk and also a turn lane into their access point along Quartzon. Matters such as traffic mitigation, drive, specific driveway locations, landscape detail, drainage, utilities, and architectural details would be matters identified at the time of the major site plan consideration. When reviewing zone changes, staff evaluates these three code criteria, and the staff report and the RCA submitted for this zone change goes into this in more detail, but I would, I wanted to walk through these criteria with you in this presentation as well. So with regard to the criteria, it centers, centers around compatibility with the general plan designation for the property. This area lies within the community corridor general plan designation. And within the community corridor, it encourages increased activity along arterial roads, providing a range of uses. I should note that both Treacle and Quartzon are arterials, and multifamily zoning is supported in the community corridor designation up to twenty-five dwelling units per acre. If this site were to develop at its maximum of two-hundred-and-sixteen, that would put the density at around twenty-one dwelling units per acre. So it would actually fall under the maximum which is allowed under community corridor. There is a requirement of the general plan that all multifamily development adjacent to single-family residential uses shall be designed to be compatible. And that's one of the reasons why I'm stressing the recommended conditions because their intent is to bolster that compatibility to meet the intent of the general plan. The zone change also has to be determined necessary at this time. And so staff did do quite a bit of evaluation to determine whether R three zoning was necessary right now. So the General Plan 2030 recommends that multifamily development should represent fifteen percent of the residential growth. In the past two years, however, we've only issued eleven single-family permits while we've issued, I'm sorry, eleven multifamily permits while we've issued twenty-seven-hundred single-family permits. So based on the math, actually, we should be issuing about four-hundred, permits for four-hundred multifamily units. That would reflect the fifteen percent total. So I should also note that there hasn't been a significant number of multifamily units permitted since 2014. That was the last sort of rush of, of multifamily. So, we're about eight years behind in terms of, of that fifteen percent proportion. The criteria goes on to evaluate whether there's goals that speak to the zone change request and a number of action steps. And staff did find that there were a number of goals and action steps that would support this zone change, including the promotion of high-density residential uses along urban corridors. You know, one thing to note is that Quartzon's ultimately going to have an interchange with I-ten. And so, the development of higher-density communities is, is appropriate there just on the, the fact that there will ultimately be an interchange further to the east. And also, one of the goals talks about promoting use-to-use compatibility when approving new developments adjacent to existing residential areas. One of the action steps for that is to promote design compatibility between residential developments of different scale by encouraging the use of physical separation or landscape areas to separate adjacent single and multi-story developments. So that's one of the reasons why that twenty-foot landscape minimum buffer is an important recommendation because that coupled with the existing thirty-foot buffer will provide basically the equivalent of what would be a right-of-way width of fifty feet. Now, I talked about how we identified that multifamily is considered a need considering that we've only issued eleven permits for multifamily in the last two years, whereas really, we should be at about four-hundred permits. But the other side of the coin is we have to look at, do we also need commercial, and particularly, commercial at this specific location? And so, I looked at some existing vacant commercial sites surrounding this proposed R three site. And due north is, is a two-acre site that sits between Powerhouse, Fitness, and Treacle. Catty Corner to this site is a thirteen-acre commercially designated area. South of that are eight acres that's currently vacant. That would likely be developed for offices. You have a one-acre parcel on the west side of Treacle Road that sits to the south. You also have a one-acre office use site that sits directly to the south of this area. And then over by the Safeway Shopping Center, there's about three acres' worth of developable land for, for commercial development. And then, continuing counterclockwise, you have a ten-point-five-acre site that sits south of the rec center that's currently designated for office uses, and then a twenty-one-acre commercial site that sits at the southwest corner of Quartzon and Peart, and then five acres currently at the north, at the northwest corner of Quartzon and Peart. So all total, you know, this adds up to about sixty-four acres of vacant office or, or commercial use. And when looking at the general plan, there was an analysis done where it showed that there would be a minimum of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight acres needed for commercial office or institutional development by, between now and 2050. We would need two-hundred-and-sixty-eight acres, however, existing vacant is six-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-four acres. And this area alone, just what you see on this map, you know, sixty-four acres within the general vicinity would meet basically twenty-five percent of that need just within this vicinity for the entire city through 2050. So staff is comfortable with this area transitioning from commercial to multifamily, especially in the light of the fact that there's some good commercially designated sites in the near vicinity. Regarding the outreach and response and public comments pertaining to this zone change request, I wanted to walk through the public notification efforts that were made. So back in November of last year, there was a neighborhood meeting held. Notification for that involved the HOA and then owners of property within three-hundred feet of the entire vacant area that sits in that quadrant there, south of Quartzon and east of Treacle. So notification went out beyond just that ten acres proposed for the zone change, but, but the entire vacant area. And there was one resident who attended, and then there was one inquiry made after the meeting via telephone. However, no specific comments were, were directed to staff at that time. Then, in January, there was notice of public hearings for the Planning Commission meeting and council meeting. We received two inquiries, but again, no specific comments were provided. And then, we started to get more feedback the closer we got to the actual Planning Commission meeting. That week of, of the Planning Commission meeting, we received basically three comments. One was from the resident who attended the neighborhood meeting, concluding that they were not in support of the R three zoning. The commercial zoning should remain. However, if developed residentially, the height should be limited to two stories. Another comment pertained to the height being too tall. There were concerns about the intrusion of privacy and also concerns about traffic. And they also advised that the business entitlement should remain. There was another property owner who had expressed concerns about property values and diminished privacy. And then, we received two emails that have been distributed to you this evening because they were received after the RCA was created. They were written by a Mr. Griffin who is a resident or homeowner directly next to this proposed R three site. And he expressed concerns about safety. Multifamily development can bring a criminal element. There were concerns about headlights from the multifamily development would permeate through the open fencing that exists along the western boundary of Cottonwood Ranch's lots. And then there was a security concern about the fact that there's an access road easement paralleling Cottonwood Ranch, which I'll, I'll show you what that is on an upcoming slide. And then we learned that on, on or around February twenty-fifth, there was additional notice distributed to the Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood at large by the HOA. And then, at Planning Commission itself, there were a number of residents who spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. And, and their concerns basically echoed the feedback that we had received in emails, largely connected with traffic and just the appropriateness of multifamily next to single-family. So again, I wanted to iterate the recommended conditions by staff and, and recommended for approval by Planning Commission to bolster the compatibility with the single-family development within Cottonwood Ranch. Regarding the view fencing and security concerns by Mr. Griffin, one of the things that I want to point out is that, that there probably won't be headlight glare into that open fencing because one of the recommended conditions is that we are seeking appropriate screening at the time of major site plan. And like I said, that could be via a wall, or, or that could be the backs of where enclosed carports could be situated. So the intent would be not to provide glare into those backyards. And then, there is indeed an access easement that sits about fifty feet from the backyards of the Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood. That access easement serves as emergency ingress and egress for future development of the parcel to the south. Primary access to not only this site, but to the remainder of the undeveloped property would be off of Treacle. And that emergency access would go through the apartment site out to Quartzon. Now, one of the advantages of this, if it were to develop as multifamily, as opposed to if it were developed as commercial, is that it's very likely that this multifamily development would be gated. And so that emergency access easement, where there were concerns the first time it was proposed in connection with the development to the south, if that, if that were to go through a commercial- go through a commercial area, it wouldn't be gated. It, it would probably actually double as a service road for the backs of the, um, commercial or retail buildings potentially. And so it would see a lot more traffic and impact unless we really honed in on how to, to better buffer that. But going through a multifamily residential area, it will likely be gated, so it would further minimize that, that flow of traffic. And then regarding traffic specifically, um, the EPS group provided a, a basic analysis of trip generation that's created by multifamily versus trip generation if this were to develop commercially. It made an assumption, if this site were to develop at a, um, at a, basically 20% lot coverage, um, so an, an 87,120 square foot retail shopping center, which is, which is pretty conservative considering it's a 10-acre site. Um, it had done an assessment that the daily vehicle-generated trips for multifamily would be just shy of 1,500, whereas the daily generated trips for a shopping plaza would be about 5,900. So a difference of 4,426 trips. So traffic would actually be significantly less if developed as multifamily. Also, the AM and PM peak hours are significantly more if it were to develop as a retail center. Um, almost twice the, the trips, um, in the AM hour if it were to develop commercially. And then the, the PM peak hour is even significantly greater, um, whereas it anticipates 110 total trips in the PM peak hour for multifamily and 452 trips, um, if developed as a retail center. And this graphic sort of shows you a comparison on total daily trips if it were to develop as a retail center versus a 216-unit multifamily development. So at its February 3rd meeting, on a vote of five to one, planning commission did vote to forward to council a recommendation to approve this zone change request, subject to the following conditions that I stipulated in the report in this presentation. And that concludes my presentation.
I, just one question. At some point in time, when would the developer indicate whether it would be likely gated or would be gated?
Mr. Mayor, that would be something that would be shown on the major site plan. Because we'd have to evaluate for queuing behind the gate, between the gate and the roadways.
That something could be required at that point in time?
So there's a number of options. It could be, um, an added condition that the complex be gated, um, or planning commission would have that leisure to seek that it be gated as part of their review.
Okay.
James, on one of the pictures that you have there on the right, the buildings, some of the buildings were blue and some were gray. And now the, the last two slides you had, they're all gray or brown. Can you tell me what the difference? Is there, are all those buildings the same size?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lavender, the reason why on one of the slides, some of the buildings were blue was to, to emphasize which buildings were the closest to the, um, single-family residential area and how it can meet the condition of the narrow elevation being parallel.
So are all these buildings 20 feet or 35?
So this is just conceptual. I believe that some of the buildings, like if you notice building nine and four and three are a little bit longer, um, than, than buildings seven and eight, for example. I think there's a different unit mix proposed, but where you see that measurement for 20 feet is the distance between buildings.
Okay. So we don't know what the size of these, how the, the height of these buildings are?
We don't know what the ultimate size will be per se. The maximum height would be 35, three stories.
I understand there's a shortage of multifamily homes or apartments in our community. Is the shortage land zone for that, or is the shortage just the number that are built now?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the shortage is development proposals for the sites. Um, there are a number of sites that are already zoned for multifamily. Um, I don't know if any of them have sort of the utilities and roadway improvements ready to the extent that this one does. This is really shovel-ready. You see there's very little, um, modification to the street network that needs to happen or the utilities. But we have sufficient zoning. Um, I don't know if we have sufficiently, sufficient infrastructure to the sites. Um, many of the other ones have infrastructure improvements that have to be made.
Thank you.
Lisa?
I want to piggyback on what, um, Councilmember Lavender was talking about. Of course, I appreciate, um, everything you took into consideration, some of the concerns. I understand the homeowners, though. I mean, it, it, it's kind of weird that they have the open fencing in, in those backyards. So, um, so obviously those homeowners, it would be frustrating, but, um, but, but I, but I do appreciate all the conditions you put in to, um, to, you know, listen to their, their concerns. But when Jeff was talking about the height of those buildings, can you put a condition on the ones that are on that eastern portion that they would be, could be two-story and the other ones three stories? Because I know there are apartment complexes that have both. Um, is that something you could, could do?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fitzgibbons, um, that certainly is a condition that could be looked at or added. When evaluating the, um, what conditions would be appropriate, um, I, I arrived at the fact that, you know, if all the buildings were to be built at three-story, that would, that could work if a great enough distance was provided between those tall buildings and the single-family residential area. And so that's where I arrived at a 125-foot distance. And it, and actually, if you look at the conceptual site plan, they're showing that they can actually, um, place the buildings even further than the recommended condition.
They're 152 feet.
The building's 152 feet, um, which would actually be that added with the 30-foot landscape tract, you know, it's a, you know, over 150 feet.
It's a long way.
Yeah, that is a long way.
So I guess my thought is, is in, if I were to have drafted a condition that said the buildings closest to the single-family residential area would be limited to two stories, I probably would have implemented a less restrictive setback. I don't know what that setback would be, but the goal was to put in buildings, whether they're two or three stories, a really considerable distance away.
Okay.
And that's a lot further than the zoning, original zoning requirements. Because wasn't it like 25 feet?
20 feet.
20 feet, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's like four times, five times.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions reading through the, the Cottonwood Ranch homeowners, and I definitely like to hear their concerns. On the east side of that building, I don't know how far you can go on the east side of the, the, um, the multifamilies. Are there windows proposed for that, or do we know? I mean, because some, sometimes stairways are on the outside, you know, instead of the actual apartment. Is that some, I don't know how, how picky you can get, but that's one of the main concerns is looking over, and I don't know what the view is from three stories over 150 feet. My geometry skills aren't good.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lavender, that's a great question. They, they haven't submitted anything officially in terms of their elevations. I will say what they provided did show windows on the side elevations. Um, however, that could be a condition considered, um, particularly those buildings closest to the, um, residential. The applicant can also speak to that more specifically in terms of what the, those side profiles are intended to look like.
Okay, and then I appreciate the, uh, the traffic, uh, information that you gave us. So it seems that that concern is going to be not as bad as, as what people think. I did read one about the, the, um, sewer odor in that area. And I, I know that's been a problem, and I, I drive by their lot, and I think if I remember from Public Works, that one of the problems with our sewers on that side of town is that they were made for all of these houses that aren't there, so it's actually not flowing enough, and that's why it smells. Is that the case? I don't know if I picked on Kevin or not, but if you heard that? No? Sorry, Kevin. I should have said, hey, Kevin. Um, but, but one of the concerns was the sewer smell in that area? And, and I think I've talked to you about it before, or someone in your department, because those sewers were built at a bigger size for all the coming development, and one of the problems is they don't flow enough because there's not enough development on that side of town. Is that true, or do you know? I'll put you on the spot, Kevin. I apologize.
There are a lot of reasons for sewer odors. Some of what you've mentioned is, is accurate, but, uh, there are, there are different reasons why there might be sewer odors in that area. Um, of course, the Cortson line is our major trunk line that runs east to west of the plant. And we actually have two lines in that area on Cortson. And that's one of the things we're doing is we're designing the new Cortson Line Relief Sewer that will hopefully take care of some of those issues. But it's a, it's a combination of a lot of different issues in that area that create the sewer odors.
Okay. Thanks. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Kevin. And then we did talk earlier tonight and all the time about this workforce housing, affordable housing is needed. Um, but another thing is we talked about land use and zoning for multifamily, but that goes, um, and I don't know if you've seen your office, we have a lot of B2 land, and I'd rather have businesses. They create more sales tax dollars. But have, you know, with the economy going the way it is and everything I've studied and read, is that business requests are going down. Do you see that in your, for like, uh, strip center-type businesses or all that?
I think Paul's going to fill this question.
Yeah, you did, you did give that one, the one thing about the percentage of business.
Yeah, Councilman Herman, you know, we looked at that very closely when we, uh, were working on the general plan, because we had to figure out how much commercial land use category we need. So what I did is I did an analysis of how much commercial building we've done over the last 10 years and tried to project it forward to see how much we need for each of the next decades. And, uh, as James showed you.
That's where you came up with this?
Yeah, can you make the gray window go away there, James? So we think we need 78 acres for, over the next decade of commercial. And as you see here, you know, we need it distributed throughout the community. Just the red here on this screen is 64 acres. So we have way more commercial zoning in the community than we really need to meet our need. That's, that's our read.
Paul, I, I just, my observation is we're not seeing a lot of business. We, we have vacant buildings today that we can't fill, so.
That create. Just up, just up the street from here.
And online, yeah, and online, the online purchasing has really put a cramp in.
Not to be confused with industrial, but business zoning, yeah.
Business zoning.
You're right. Most of it is, is lodging, hotels, restaurants.
RV storage.
RV storage. Not that much retail. You're right, Mr. Mayor.
And then I guess to Lisa's, I think Lisa brought it up, is, uh, the 20-foot height on those buildings, or maybe high, high windows? I don't, they, they can address that when they come up, the applicant.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. All right, then, um, we'll take a look here. I've lost my place. Uh, item L1. It's a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor to, uh, anyone here who would like to address the council that's here for item L1.
Honorable Mayor, Council, Dennis Newcomb, Law Firm of Gamet and Burnham, representing the applicant this evening. I don't know if we'll have a few moments to speak after the.
Yeah, if you just give us your name and.
Sure. Dennis Newcomb, Gamet and Burnham, 40 North Central Avenue. Appreciate being here. I think this was a very thorough presentation that Jim had given to this evening, and we're very pleased to be in a posture of support from staff and from the commission. We recognize, as Paul and the others have stated, rightsizing is of necessary need with commercial. And what's better to right-size with than multifamily, if you will, in this case? We believe, and Eric will speak to this with Real Estate Equities, the, the fact of the matter is that this is a perfect location for this type of density, this type of housing units that are well-needed within this community. Excuse me. Certainly, the aspect of change is not always easy, but we certainly have recognized that there's been challenges throughout these last few years with regards to development and bringing in new business. And your town, your city, has done a tremendous, uh, beyond my firm and what we've seen and what we've brought to the community with our clients, there has been a huge uptick in businesses and the like, uh, employment businesses. And also with that comes the need for diversity of housing. So I don't want to take all the time. I'm, I'm hoping Eric can get up and speak, but I, I know my place, and I know I shouldn't speak too long, and I, I can go on forever. My mother is Italian, so my last name is Newcomb, but I'm the Italian side of speaking too long sometimes. So, um, we are very pleased to be here in the posture of support. We believe this is right sizing, right location, right stipulations. So not only this ownership going forward, but any future owner that may come onto the site will protect the neighbors. I applaud your staff. Your staff is excellent professional, and I applaud our client for will, being willing to accept some of these severe stipulations, if you will. 125 feet, 200 feet, whatever, whatever the distance is, 30-foot of landscaping and all that. With that be saying, being said, I, if I could pass it off to Eric at this moment, I would appreciate it.
He can have his own three minutes.
He can have his. I, I gave you three. All right. Thank you. You're making me look good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'm Eric Omdahl with Real Estate Equities, the applicant and developer here. Again, thanks for your time. And James, thank you for your thoroughness and for working with us on all these stipulations. I think in soliciting the feedback from the neighbors throughout the public outreach process, we were able to hear several concerns, I think, and distill several of them through the stipulations that we worked carefully to craft. And I think that this property and community as developed, um, would be a really big asset to this community. I just want to highlight a couple of things. I know James kind of had touched on the traffic and, and kind of land use commercial study, but I want to just sort of reemphasize some of the data that we're seeing as apartment developers and property managers in terms of the need for that here and why we're looking at this particular site in this kind of density. And it comes down to, in Casa Grande, as was mentioned, there aren't a lot of multifamily sites that have this type of access to utilities that are shovel-ready, that have an ability to come in this year and make an impact in that permit shortage on the multifamily side. As was mentioned by the gentleman just in the public comments period, there isn't enough apartment developments. $300,000 homes is the new 200, and that didn't happen in very long. Multifamily rents have exceeded 15% year-over-year increases in Casa Grande alone. People are starting to get priced out of their own homes on the rental side. Multifamily, um, doesn't exist, and so therefore, people are looking to rent single-family homes, which rents are now exceeding 1,800, $2,000 a month, not including utility payments. So this is a desperately needed project in this community. We like the adjacencies to schools, to parks, to retail in this area. We think it would be a really good fit. We think we'd be a great steward for this asset. We're long-term investors and owners and property managers, so we're incentivized to build this with high-quality materials that'll stand the test of time. We're incentivized to be cordial and reach out to our neighbors because we're going to be partners in this community for the long term. And so we want to hear concerns and do what we can, as you've noted in the stipulations, to see the best project that we can create. So, um, aside from that, um, you know, there will be some economic development and, and job creation through this, both temporarily from a construction basis and ongoing, bolstering the tax base, um, providing nearly $2 million in impact and permit fees if this were to move forward, all paid at closing. So, um, with that, I'm happy to, to sit back and address any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else here? Please state your name and give us your address.
My name is.
My name is Mark Griffin, and my address is 1979 North Vista Lane. I will be the property owner in Cottonwood Ranch, probably mostly directed by this. My home is on the corner there, abutting the common area of the subdivision. I'm the one that, I brought up some crime issues because in December 13th, 2015, two individuals used the existing multifamily development across Quartzon Road to stage an attempted armed robbery or burglary or whatever against my home and kicked my, attempted to kick my front door in at midnight. And I had no guns, no way to defend myself, nothing. I just ran out of the bedroom and screamed, got out of my house, and they took off running. There was a witness who saw it all, saw them park their car and got a description and everything. So when I first heard about these apartment buildings, I'm like, oh, great. You know, I already got attacked from the one across the street. Now you're gonna put one 50 feet, you know, on, by my back wall. I've also had people hop over the back wall. I had an individual do that and walk towards my patio door with his hand out. So I've had crime problems. I'm not saying, you know, what if or maybe or possibly. I've had the problems. So, you know, I'm not against development. I, that empty field wasn't that great either. It's blowing dust and trash, and there's nothing to look at anyways, and all the loud motorcycles, all that noise echoes right through. So all I'm trying to do is really be safe. I, you know, I don't want to get, I could've been killed, you know? I have no idea if they were armed or what. They didn't get in the house, but, you know, I probably shouldn't have ran out of the bedroom screaming because I, you know, they could've been in the house, and I had no way of defending myself. So what I'm trying to do is, I really don't like the idea of the three-story buildings. I like your idea about the two-story, you know, closer to the homes. You know, you can build whatever you want to build, but I want a full concrete wall instead of that view wall. So I have sent a request to the HOA to see if I can do that. You know, I'll pay for it or whatever, but I can't have people hopping over that wall. I don't want to live like that, you know? I shouldn't have to live like this. There was an incident that was recent, just two or three months ago, where again I hear a knock on my door at midnight. This time I was gonna go see what it was because the last time that didn't work out so well, and I didn't. So I look out the front window, and, you know, since the other things have happened to me, I had my home well-lit with garage lights and every single light. The back patio has light on at night. So anyways, with all the light, I could see it was a police officer. And I opened the door, and, you know, they had their SUVs point. I went over the limit. They had their SUVs pointed. So anyways, they were trying to determine if someone got in my backyard. So, sorry I went over the time, but.
Well, that's all right. When we read your email, too. If so, so, yeah.
So I was consistent with what I wrote.
Yes, you were right. You were right on. You were consistent. And we appreciate your comments.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good, Mayor.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no one else, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I'm gonna call for an ordinance number on L1. And before, before we go too far, if the developer could maybe try and work with this individual and try and find some compromise so that he feels comfortable in his home. I mean, that's what, that's what we're about. We want everybody to feel safe and comfortable. And obviously, he has some concerns. So if you guys would work with him.
Maybe the wall, too?
Yeah, maybe help him with the wall, maybe. That might be a solution.
You know, I agree, Mayor, and it is, it's just unique with their open.
Yeah, I don't know why they did that.
With the open fencing, and it's not only for him, but just overall. It's gonna be a weird little area. Even if there's a wall there, you know, people walking through, you just want to make sure that there's safety. So I really hope that, you know, we work with the developer and just make sure that we're looking at safety.
I think there will be some screening there between the property and the.
But I see your point about the wall, and hopefully they can work something. I just saw him talking, so.
Yeah, so, okay, good. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Can I ask one more question, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
On the screen you just had, James, with the setbacks? Yeah, so to that building, it's 151 feet plus 30 feet? Is that 151 feet to the property line plus 30 to the neighbor's wall, correct? So like 180 feet.
Correct.
From the property line to the border of the.
From the property line of the single-family homes.
Yes, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, that's pretty far.
So long ways.
Yeah, okay. All right. I think I've already called for the ordinance number, please, Gloria, on item L1.
Ordinance number 1178.133.2. An ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from general business to multifamily residential on property generally located at the southeast corner of Quartzon Road and Tracca Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.133.2.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. We'll move to the next item, which is item L2, another public hearing on ordinance number 1178.138.3. James?
Good evening. I'm just waiting for presentation to pop up. Okay.
Okay.
See who's working it out.
Don't have anybody left to vote.
Yeah. Electrifying.
Wow. All right. There we go. Thank you.
You wanna make us dizzy up here, Stephen?
So this is another zone change request, but I, with much hope, I think this is a lot simpler.
Okay.
So this is a request to change a portion of the Sonoran Heights PAD to R2. A little bit of background, in November of 2021, council approved a zone change for Sonoran Heights, revising its zoning from PAD to R2 for all but 27.25 acres. You can see on the right the result of that zone change, where the majority of the site went to R2 to accommodate a single-family neighborhood. And then there was a 27.25-acre remnant of the PAD. Now, within that remnant sits property that is large, most of the property is designated for multifamily residential, colored in that pinkish color. And then there's a smaller land use within that PAD designated for single-family residential. So it was basically an oversight that that yellow area was left over as part of the PAD and wasn't incorporated into the R2 zone. So this is an opportunity to correct that and revise 7.69 acres from PAD to R2 to incorporate it into the Sonoran Heights preliminary plat that we currently have under review. And so what that would do is it would rezone 7.69 acres from PAD into the R2 zone, and it would leave 19.56 acres left, which is already and currently designated multifamily. When reviewing zone changes, these are the criteria that have to be evaluated. This area does sit within the 2030 Neighborhoods General Plan Land Use Designation. Single-family developments with homes on individual lots are appropriate within the Neighborhoods category, and it shall have a maximum gross density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre.
This is the property we sold right in here.
And we also consider that this would be consistent with the city's general plan. We find that R2 is an appropriate zone district within the Neighborhoods category. Regarding the public notification process, it met that which is required by city code. We didn't receive any comments as a result of the public notification. At the February 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, on a vote of five to one, Planning Commission made a recommendation that city council approve this zone change, subject to the following conditions of record. The first is just standard that it limits the density to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. And then the second condition is that it's the same conditions of record as stipulated per ordinance 1178.138.2. That was the ordinance approving the Sonoran Heights PAD to R2 back in November. The reason why that's important is because that set forth conditions such as multifamily development was prohibited and that development of that single-family neighborhood would have to follow PAD residential design standards as far as the submittal of housing product and some of the design elements. So in order to keep it consistent, since this is being incorporated with the preplat, we're recommending that the same conditions apply. And that concludes my presentation.
Anybody have any questions? All right. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor to anyone who's here to speak on this matter. This is item L2 in our agenda. All right. Seeing no one jump up, then I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.138.3. An ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located east of North Henness Road and south of Florence Boulevard, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1178.138.3 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion. And a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote on item L2?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. That concludes our business, other than reports. So I'm gonna start over here with you, Bob.
Oh, thank you.
On reports, since you haven't given one in a while.
No.
Just here to report, you're here.
Yeah, yeah. Happy to be back, looking forward to the mayor's State of the City address tomorrow. State of the City is wonderful, and so I'm sure you have a lot of great things to report on. And thank you, Mayor, and rest of the council, for your understanding in my absence for a while. I'm so happy to be back and on the mend. I'm not 100%, but I'll get there.
All right, good. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And then I'm gonna go over to you, Mr. Lavender.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and welcome back, Bob. Just a couple of things. You know, we were saddened by the death of our former mayor, Bob Mitchell, but also Harold Kittings, who spent a lot of time sitting right over there at that table when I was on planning zoning, passed away the same day. And I always appreciated how hard Harold worked to make sure that he got everything accurate. Also, congratulations to Mark Luna, who has been promoted to head football coach at Union. I think it's a great hire. He's helped build the youth program in this community and that. And also, I'm excited, we're working with the Arizona Cardinals. They did the youth football clinic for the boys earlier this year. They are now doing clinics for girls, and they have asked me to commit that we will have 100 girls for a youth clinic that they plan on doing in March or early April. And so we're excited. So if there are residents out there that would like to see females that they know involved in this, please have them get in touch with me, and I'll get them on the list. But it's exciting that the Cardinals are making this commitment to promote youth football for our ladies as well.
Very cool. Lisa?
I just wanted, I know I was unable to attend the funeral for Mayor Mitchell, but, you know, it's just when you think back of the influence that these teachers have. You know, he was one of my teachers and very influential in my life. He was one of my favorite teachers when I was in high school. And of course, as I got older and moved back to Casa Grande, he was very supportive and encouraged me to run for city council and has always been there and been supportive. So it's just, you know, it's just amazing, you know, how much of an impact he had. And I hope all the young teachers that are watching know how much they mean to students and what the influence that they have. We had the homeless point-in-time count. So several of us participated, the mayor, councilmember McBride and I. We had, gosh, I think it was over 50 volunteers. There was eight groups that went out. I think the mayor will give the report on the total count. Was it 70, 70-some?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two people, but, you know, great participation. Of course, I know I said it last time, the police department was there in full force. There were so many officers that went along with us, and it's always a great experience to get out there and talk to people. And, but I appreciate all the help from all the community members. The Faith Alliance, the mayor's gonna be speaking next week at our luncheon, so.
It'll be repeated tomorrow.
Oh, that's okay. Yep. It's for all the pastors throughout the community. So if anyone wants to go to Compass Church, you have to wear green at St. Patrick's Day, Mayor. So, and then the Cesar Chavez, we had, I think, I don't know, was it like 50 applicants?
Forty-eight applicants.
Forty-eight applicants this year for scholarships. So we'll be awarding those on April 8th. So thank you to all our sponsors for contributing. We won't be having a dinner this year, but all that money is gonna be going to the students. So appreciate all the sponsors and all the students that applied. That's it.
Okay, great. Donna?
It was a busy weekend in Casa Grande. It, I think there was six or seven different events going on besides the funerals that were happening. So it was a good weekend, but it was a sad weekend in Casa Grande. Cactus Fly-In was what I consider a great success. There was tons of people out there. The plein air, I know that Gloria worked really hard on that, and it was exciting to drive around town and see all the people out there painting around town. And then we had the studio tours on Saturday and Sunday. Was able to stop by some of those and just to have local artists, you know, and it was just great to be outside. Kudos to Community Services. I know Steve's here. Larry had sent us out the numbers on the community center and the numbers that we have seen of participants. And, you know, to have 10,000 people walk through that door in January was just fabulous, and I will say I was one of them, and so I was excited by that. Chamber Biz Luncheon's coming up on Friday. And then, not to forget, we have the Pinal County Fair starting next week. That's it.
Don't leave them out. Mr. Powell?
Well, I've felt definitely with Bob Mitchell, very close to him. The service was a good service, and it was different. I saw Dennis there and a lot of the students that were in school when you were. And it, I've never seen him angry, ever. And it, I've, I've never seen him angry, ever. And, and that's something that you can't say about me or some other people. But he, when he was working at the school, we were trying to get the teachers together when it became time to decide what, what was going to be the, what, how much money was going to get paid out and that type of thing. And Bob would be, would be in the group representing the three teachers and it'd be smooth. He'd just say this and this and this and it was done. And I was afraid we were going to get tarred and feathered for a while there. But it, he, he just was a special person and I sat right behind his brother. And I know he, it was, it was emotional. He, he was, was hurting and, and the, then Harold Kitchen, which we've, we've talked about. Harold, to me, has always been a little bit of Mark Twain and a little bit of, who would be the one I was thinking about. But anyway, he, he was quite a storyteller and as everybody knows. And he, he just, I, I was shocked. Two the same morning, two the same morning. And, and so I, as I say, I'm sad for both of them and their families and their friends. And, but I will tell you this, that at Bob's, you could tell he was really appreciated and loved. And it, it turned out to be one of the best, best funeral, one of the most spiritual funerals that I've attended and I thought it was really good.
All right, Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. Got a few things. I was honored to be asked to judge a plein air competition on, on Saturday, which was not a small task. And it's amazing what people can paint in a morning in Casa Grande. And I want to thank Gloria and the Arts and Humanities Commission. They did a great job putting that on. They handled everything. Neat thing this year is they had a band playing while the judging was going on and a party. And I heard there was dancing.
And free hot dogs.
Uh huh, and free hot dogs. You know, there was dancing, right, Stephen? But amazing the amount of talent and the amount of work that goes into it. And our former councilman Ralph Rela was the head of the, the event. So he did a great job announcing. And the band was the Midnight Confessions, featuring one of our own old police officers, Mark Bonzall, retired police officer. And they were really good. And the pictures are in the lobby if you want to see which ones won. And the neatest thing, too, is that Gloria and the commission, Arts and Humanities Commission have monetary prizes and the people when they won were so excited. And, and it was great to see, I mean, he was really jumped up when he won the big prize. And then they had, through Gila River Indian Community, they got a grant for junior high school students to have their own show and plein air con, and they actually got a lesson in plein air from their art teacher, got buses, went out. And they had about, what is it, like forty or thirty, twenty-eight, I think, pictures from them as well. So, and it was at the historical museum, so that was even neat. That was really neat. So thank you, Gloria and Arts and Humanities Commission for doing that. It's a really neat tradition that we have. And it's neat to see people's perspective of places in our town.
Everybody likes Dairy Queen.
Yep, the Dairy Queen was popular there. Maybe you can, because you can eat while you're doing it, right? And then the Chamber Home Health and Garden Show at the former Sands Club, which is now going to be car dealerships, was sponsored by Jones Ford. And they had a car show, lots of people there, booths, information, fun, prizes. So that was good to meet a lot of people. That's where I heard a lot of concerns about stuff that's going on. But a lot of good thing, I mean, we got a lot of compliments, too, about what's going on in the city for the most part. And Main Street has events every Saturday this month, don't forget, downtown. So there'll be a lot of events going on down there to support those businesses. And another thing about Harold Kitchen is he was so dedicated. He always covered the youth commission as well on his Saturdays. And would do that for us a lot. And lastly, I also was honored to attend Bob Mitchell's funeral. And, you know, great speakers, former mayor Chuck Walton, Mr. McEwen from the high school, Representative Mitchell, Kevin White, Judge Kevin White, Dick Powell and his grandson, and just touching tributes. And it was interesting because he was an inspiration to so many. They estimated that over eight thousand students went through his classroom. And that's not counting the Back East trip, which I got to go on, and the coaching that he did. And his love for, I mean, this building was one of his projects, I think, in saving it because they said he, he was sad that Central School wasn't safe. So they made a concerted effort to, to get this building. And, and interestingly, probably one of the reasons I'm here is because, right here, is because when Bob Mitchell was my government teacher, right over there, he was also the mayor simultaneously. So if that's not a neat way to grow up in Casa Grande, I don't know what is. And you said you never saw him angry. Well, you didn't wake up late on the Back East trip for various reasons, Mr. Powell.
What's that?
I said, if you never saw Bob angry, you didn't wake up late on the Back East trip for the high school with, with Mr. Mitchell, you know?
Oh, really?
Yeah, but, but it was more like, I told you not to do that. Now let's go. So he had a great way of handling it. And he was.
Chew you out.
Yes, and he knew so much history about Washington DC, where to go, where to eat, of course. But just a very fitting tribute and made quite a mark on this town, so. That's all I have.
No, you go now.
Go now, okay. The, basically, Boy Scout Jamboree, I had a pack from nineteen fifty-seven to go back to Valley Forge. And, and I took it with me, but I didn't realize Bob had gone. And it wasn't to the very same one, it might have been. But he, we went, we went from, in a troop train, leaving Arizona and we went to New Orleans and we went up the river on a paddle boat and came back and swam and, and just wonderful. And the one thing that really bothered me, we got to go to the, watch the senators play the Yankees. And the, after the game was over, they announced, anybody that wants an autograph for the Boy Scouts, come on down. And Mickey Mantle was not a good guy. And he came out and he started pushing those kids out of his way. And, and Yogi Berra came down and some of the others for, that were really good to be there. But it, it was just a really special time. And we got Claire up as far as Chicago and Smithsonian Institute. And, I mean, it was just amazing. And Bob, if you know Bob, I took some little Cuchina dolls to trade and I got a squirrel skin out of it, so I thought I was doing really good. And, but Bob, I said, what, what did you trade? I kept all my money. So he, he knew how to, he knew how to, where to put the money when he wanted it. But he, that, that was a very special time and it, I don't know if they still do it or not. But, okay, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Thank you, everybody else. I really don't have a report because I'm going to give it tomorrow. So I just want to reiterate everyone else's condolences to Harold Kitchen and Bob as well, Bob Mitchell. And our heartfelt sorrow goes out to their families. But tomorrow at twelve fifty-five, we will start the broadcast. So if you don't have a reservation and/or can't get in when you happen to show up because you didn't make a reservation, because I think we're full. I think capacity's about two hundred in the community rec center. So if you want to watch the live, want to watch it live, you can go on our Facebook, city's Facebook page and YouTube pages at twelve fifty-five. And, because the caller, caller video will air at twelve fifty-five, so you need to see that. It's actually a very, very cool video. That'll be kind of airing before the presentation. It's just kind of a roll, a roll the tape kind of thing. And we'll also be distributing or send out some information about where you could watch it recorded. So it will be recorded and it will be on our website. It will not be on Channel eleven tomorrow, so because of where we're broadcasting from, we can't get it to Channel eleven from there. But we'll see everybody tomorrow. Look for some interesting presentations.